Today we will be exploring the nature of the river Choronghong River. The river Choronghong River is a major river in China, and it flows through many rivers throughout the country. The main source of water is located in the city of Chengdu, China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart. It is the most famous river in China. The river Choronghong River is also known as the river of China's heart.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Welcome to the April 30th, 2024 Board Business Meeting at Memphis Shelby County Schools. Mrs. Key, please call the row.
Commissioner McKissick.
Present.
Commissioner Hugh Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Woods. Commissioner Love.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Calvo. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Williams.
Commissioner.
Chair Green.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
President.
Commissioner Calvo.
Present.
We have eight commissioners available.
Thank you, we do have a quorum tonight.
More time. Left. Precedent. Hudge.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Face. Forward.
The question is now on approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments?
Madam Chair, we are pulling 12.9 MOU acceptance, the Verizon Innovative Labs grant. We just want to give our legal team additional time to work through that MOU. And we are adding an item to the agenda for approval for an amendment to the collaborative conferencing MOU.
Yes ma'am, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you Chair Green, I would like to add a resolution about prohibiting school employees from carrying firearms on school grounds, please.
Yes ma'am. Commissioner Calvo.
Madam Chair, just a point of order, for an item on the consent, to pull out an item on the consent agenda, do we do that now, or do we do that when we get to 12.0?
You want to put it on for, to talk about it, then pull it when we get to the consent agenda.
Okay, because normally it's on 12.0, but this time it just goes straight into the first item, on the 12.1.
The 12.1 is, it just lists consent agenda, but when we.
No it does not.
Or it doesn't, it should.
Sure.
But if there's something you want to pull, pull it when the consent agenda comes up. You can ask if anyone wants to pull anything at that time.
Thank you ma'am, thank you sir.
Madam Chair, if I may have the privilege, I'd like to add an item to the agenda tonight, an interim superintendent Williams contract. Thank you.
Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner McKissick.
Aye.
Commissioner Hugh Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Woods.
Aye.
Commissioner Love.
Aye.
Commissioner Coleman.
Aye.
Commissioner Calvo.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Chair Green.
Aye.
You have nine as affirmative.
Thank you, the agenda is approved. We are now on to public comment. In accordance with state statute, the board shall reserve a period of public comment during business and special call meetings. Only those members of the public who sign up are permitted to speak. Please make sure you state your name and address before speaking tonight. A sign up sheet was made available 30 minutes prior to the meeting. Speakers must state their name, organization he or she is representing, if any, and the subject of your comments before you are permitted to proceed. You may offer objective comments about school operations and programs that concern them. Please refrain from using names of personnel or names of persons connected with the school system when loggating complaint. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive language. The chairwoman shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who has disrupted or does not adhere to the board rules. Tonight we have 24 speakers, and you will have one minute and 15 seconds. I'll call the first five speakers so that you can line up and be prepared to speak. Tim Ware. Mr. Milton, I'm sorry, we can't read your last name. Thank you. Ben Frazier, Justin Crutcher, and Greg Williams, Yolanda Williamson, please come. It's first six speakers, thank you.
My name is Tim Ware, my address is 1369 Cedar Run Cove, Cordova, Tennessee, 38016. I'm representing Memphis Grizzlies Prep. First of all, special thanks to Commissioner McKissick, who is my board member, leading District One. On behalf of Grizzlies Prep, I wanted to speak a little bit about the approval for the STEAM School for Girls that we have been proposing. Memphis Grizzlies Prep is in our 13th year of operation, I am in my third year at the helm. Thank you for all the calls, feedback, and guidance that has been provided so far. I just wanted to state that one of the strongest indicators of future performance is past performance, and Grizzlies Prep has been a strong partner to Memphis Shelby County Schools for the last 13 years. They have been a perpetually high performing school with nearly 350 students and a 21% rate of students with special education. Last year, we scored 70, in the 75th percentile for growth across all tested subjects. Nine of 13 of those schools were above the 80th percentile, four above the 90th percentile. We take care of our teachers so that they take care of our students. Our retention rate was above, has been above 85% for the past two years. We know that we have delivered on the promises of the district and our school, and look forward to continuing if we are given that opportunity. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Milton Blewett, my address is 9309 Morning Garden Cove. I'm here to speak on behalf of Wooddale Middle School, which is the Green Dot School. I have two grandsons that attend that school, both are in the eighth grade, this is their second year attending Wooddale. And during the time that they've been there, the grades have greatly improved, they've just took a better attitude towards school as a whole. The communication with the teachers is outstanding, also Ms. Green, their principal, I want to thank her for her understanding and communication that, and cooperation that she's given me. And I'd just like to thank Wooddale as a whole for all of the hard work that they've put in in helping my grandsons to do better and have a better attitude in school as a whole. And thank you very much for having me to see you.
Hey everybody, how y'all doing? All right, I'm Justin Crutcher, Memphis Police Officer 15 years, basketball coach, and also baseball coach at Wooddale Middle School. Why Wooddale? Former President Barack Obama changed, he stated, "The change will not come if wait for some of other people to do it." We are the ones that we'll be waiting for, we are the change that we seek. I use, some of the time I use basketball to get through our young people. I always say that it's not about winning on the court, but it's all about winning at life. Under Wooddale and Green Dot Public Schools, they have created opportunities for our young people to stay out of trouble and to keep fighting. They have encouraged our youngsters to continue to fight and have change begin with them. When you think about offense with basketball, no matter how hard it is to score, you can still make it despite of the obstacles by keeping a good attitude, mindset, and also willingness to push forward. When you think about also defense, you're thinking about a comeback, and it's a balanced life to have a successful life. Time up.
I think we skipped Ben Frazier.
My name is Ben Frazier, 3393 Knight Road. I'm here to speak on behalf of Wooddale Middle School, Parkway Village Neighborhood. Everybody asks, why Wooddale, why Green Dot? And my question is, why not? My son is on the spectrum, he's had an IEP since elementary school. The public school system kind of failed me, and when I got my child to Wooddale, everything changed. Wooddale is a family oriented school, they take care of the kids. My son has been in aviation programs, stuff that he would have never gotten if he stayed in public schools. It's a neighborhood school, and they deal with the community, the staff keeps the parents informed. Everything that I was not getting when he was not at Green Dot Schools, I'm getting now. My son is excelling, he came out of his shell, you can't even tell that my son is on the spectrum because they have worked with him so much, and I appreciate Wooddale so much for everything that they have done, and I just ask that we keep Wooddale the way that it is. Thank you.
Yolanda Williamson, 8332 Countrywood Fairway, retired teacher, administrator in Memphis Shelby County Schools. I'm speaking on Tresven High School and the fight that was there. First of all, to address the board, welcome Dr. Fagan to Memphis. Teachers don't come to school to fight students. First of all, let's get this, they don't come to school to fight students. That particular teacher did not come to school to fight a student, but they have a right to defend themselves. The teacher that I'm speaking about has integrity, has worked at that school, wants to be at the school, the community is behind that teacher, the students love that teacher, he's performed the duties well, and he wants to be there. And I have enough experience to know that when you find a teacher that wants to be in the building, that goes 110% for that school, that's an employee you want to keep. And that's the kind of integrity that I'm speaking about with the teacher that was in the fight. Sometimes the people in the buildings that are far away from the schools now don't really understand. are far away from the schools now don't really understand the dynamics that are in those buildings. So it takes, sometimes that you have to pause back and get to know the situation before you advise people to resign from a position that they've worked hard at. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Williams?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Williams. My current address is twenty-four fifty-five Surrey Hill Place. I am the educator that she's talking about. I've been the assistant for seven years at MSCS and head girls' basketball coach at Tresvon High. Just recently was told to resign or I would be fired due to a student physically assaulting me. I was doing my daily duty in the cafeteria and was approached by a female student. They said she needed help from this guy who was verbally abusing her, who was cursing her out, who wanted to fight her. I asked him to escort and leave the cafeteria. He didn't want to do it. We do have video to support that. I never touched the kid, escorted him out as well as I could. He pushed me, and then he swung on me over ten times. So I had no choice but to defend myself with just one swing, with one swing. And so I'm here today. Again, like I said, I've been asked to resign or threatened to be fired. The male student declined to do anything. I have pressed charges on him as well. And I just want to thank my principal who's here and all my admin who is here supporting us, supporting me, and my family who's also a teacher over fifteen years. My whole family is full of educators. So I just want to say thank y'all, and also to the council members that I met and recently spoke with. People, we only got one thing to do, is no violence against our educators. Too many teachers, about a thousand, have emailed me and texted me that they're tired of getting verbally abused by our students, considerous amounts of threats every day. And when you're a male in the building, you got to stand up for them, especially the teachers, the lady teachers. Thank y'all. Have a good day.
Mr. Langston, can you go and see that employee, please? In general, when we think about all that we are experiencing overall, we're never tolerating violence one way or the other. And so I appreciate you speaking, and we'll make sure we handle accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Greg Williams. Hopefully you stepped out. Ms. Greggs, Bishop Lampkin, Patricia Ingram, Latasha Anderson, Brittany Jones, and Lisa Williams, in that order.
Good evening, board members, parents, and community members. As a member of a board watching meeting tonight, I want to address two important meetings in our community, regaining trust and-
Speak into the mic so we can hear you, ma'am.
Regaining trust and addressing concerns. Restoring trust. Trust is crucial for success. We recognize that trust has been compromised, but we are committed to rebuilding it through transparency and open discussion. We understand there are pressing concerns within our district. Dr. Fagan is aware of these concerns and fairly dedicated to find a solution that meet the needs of our entire community. She came to the community, engaged with us, so that she and her team could put together a strategy together to fix the issues that is broken within our system. Thank you, and have a nice day.
Charles Lampkin, thirty-seven left, off C Highway. It's been a minute since I've been to this mic, so I'll be short-swinged to the point. I am confident that we made the right selection. Our superintendent has done exactly what she said she was going to do. She hit the ground running, and she has not stopped. She's been to the community. She's demonstrated integrity. She's gone through. She's listened twice as much as she's spoken. I think we owe her to hold her hands up and support her. She's not going to be perfect. She's going to have some loss here and there. But guess what? My team and I, the community, the stakeholders, I believe that we're going to do everything possible to help her and push her across the goal line with this board's help and be sure that she's successful. That's all I have to say tonight. Congratulations. Go for it, Superintendent. We thank you.
Good afternoon. Latasha Anderson, twenty-thirty-five Northport Road, Cordova, three eight zero one six. I'm on the Board of Directors of the United Education Association as the mental health representative. I would like to take the time to thank the district for reconvening for collaborative conferencing and coming to a resolution that favors teachers. Great job. I would also like to take this time to mention that Mental Health Awareness Month begins tomorrow. As educators go about their day, serving as heroes for the children of this district, please remember to take care of yourself as you continue to take care of others. Your mental health is very important. We depend on it. Our children depend on it. Thank you.
Good evening. Brittany Jones, four five five zero Applestone Street. I'm here on behalf of Grizzlies Prep and the All Girls School. My thirteen-year-old son with autism is finishing his second year with Grizzly Prep All-Boy School, and he has matured amazing mentally, emotionally, academically, and all without the presence of his father, simply because of all the things Grizzlies Prep have done and the opportunities that have been presented to him. If Grizzlies Prep is granted the opportunity to open an all-girls school, I know it would offer a safe and supportive space for girls to be themselves and realize the power of their voices. I know without a shadow of a doubt, it would be a learning environment where girls would learn self-confidence and leadership skills through opportunities for them that would set them up for success beyond graduation. My son doesn't have his father, but he has Grizzlies Prep. All girls don't experience love and support from their mothers, nor do they always have positive female role models, but they could have Grizzlies Prep All-Girls School. Again, my name is Brittany Jones, and I pray my nine-year-old daughter is blessed with the opportunity to attend and experience GP's All-Girls School one day with your approval. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Ingram. My grandson attends Grizzly Prep. This is his first year. I was thinking about not sending him to an all-boy school because I wasn't used to an all-boy school, but I'm so glad he has gone. He doesn't have his father in his life, and since he's been there, his self-esteem has been boosted, his confidence has been increased, he has gained self-discipline, and is being taught strong values. He is not quite there yet, but he's getting there, and his teachers never give up on him. They communicate often with me and let me know what his progress is. This is something I really appreciate, and I let the teachers know all the time. Grizzlies Prep has perfected a model of single-sex education. They have great teachers, great support staff. They cater to the needs of the male students. They have the blueprint for successful single-sex education with a detailed set of teaching plans, resources for the teachers, the parents, and the students. The curriculum is high-quality. This model has been tried and perfected. It helps young men succeed and even excel. Thank you for your attention.
I'm Lisa Williams, president of Women in Aviation, the Memphis Bills, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Green Dot Schools. Why Wooddale? Why Green Dot? First, I'd like to commend the staff at Wooddale Middle School for the outstanding work they've done. The staff reached out to me to organize a fifty-student event, which quickly exploded into a five-hundred-student aviation takeover day. Through hands-on aviation activities, students were able to understand they are capable of succeeding in these careers. The Wooddale staff was adamant about including all the students enrolled in the school, which speaks to their passion and commitment to providing opportunities for their students. The Wooddale staff is keeping students engaged by immersing them in aviation through tours of aviation-related facilities, air traffic control. Students are listening as the controllers are directing live air traffic. At FedEx, they toured a Boeing triple-seven simulator and then physically walked up to the airplane, understanding that they too can fly, fix, and program these aircraft. Next on the agenda is a tour of Luke Weathers Flight Academy. Aviation education in underserved communities is crucial for fostering diversity and opportunity in the aviation aerospace industry.
Liz Marable, Pedro Velasquez, Latonya Robinson, Antranet Neighbors, and Charlotte Fields.
Good evening. My name is Liz Marable. I reside at sixty-six sixty-seven Poplar Pike, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one one nine. I'm here to speak on behalf of the United Education Association, affiliate of the Tennessee Education Association, and also an affiliate of the National Education Association, the largest union on planet Earth. We are very proud to say that we would like to thank our collaborative conferencing team, all members involved, and a super thank you to Dr. Fagans. As soon as she got on board, the meeting that was supposed to take place in January suddenly happened. We are very excited about the future for educators, for ESPs, for mental health support professionals, and for this district at large. You know, often I've said that if we want to save our city, we have to save our children first, and I totally believe in educating before we police. And I think the steps that we made this last week, we're going to go back to educating our students before we have to police them. So, Dr. Fagans, we are truly and heartfully thankful for your leadership and for everyone on that team. I'm looking at a couple people right here. I know we're not supposed to name names, but I'm going to name a name. I want to thank you, Dr. Whitelaw, for your continued leadership in fighting for the teachers in this district. Thank you.
All right. So I'm Pedro Velasquez. I'm the Executive Director of Life Doc Health, and today I'm going to talk a little bit about Wooddale Middle School and my support for that organization. I am a board member of Wooddale, but more than that, I've been a community partner since 2019. About three months after we met with them, we launched a mobile food pantry and a health clinic within the school that let us screen the kids and their family members. And what we learned during that program was that fifty percent of the kids that were in this community were already at a high risk of developing diabetes or pre-diabetes. Thirty percent were already hypertensive, and twenty-five percent had moderate to severe depression. Since 2019, when we learned these stats, we were able to launch full-time nurses and a nurse practitioner in the school to try to address and follow up with these concerns. And since then, we've not only been able to treat the kids at the school, but we've been using the evidence that we gather to advocate for change at a state level so that other schools can follow our lead. So my enthusiasm for working with Wooddale comes from people that are in this school and in this organization, doing the work and not just talking the talk, and how systemic change can follow so that others can replicate our outcomes. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Latoya Robinson, address twenty-eight fifty Curtis Street. I'm a parent of a Grizzlies Prep student. I have twin boys at Grizzlies Prep, and I'm advocating for the all-girls school because of choice and the idea that the children don't have that distraction that comes with a boy and girl school. They are able to really focus on what the teachers are putting in front of them, and the teachers don't have that extra distraction of trying to, you know, this, deal with the distractions of boys and girls in the classroom. The school is dynamic. It is amazing, as my fellow parents have told you. The kids are excelling. The boys come home with a respect. They are very, very engaged in school. In fact, quick story. I just started college, and my boys, I was listening to a lesson in the car one day, and one of my sons, he was like, "Oh, that's about the king." I can't remember the king's name, but he remembered from sixth grade. So I was like, "Y'all learning that in school?" And he was like, "Well, yeah." You know, so Grizzlies Prep is a great school. They're definitely trying to get the boys to excel and understand that they have accountability and that they have a respect for themselves. And I believe having a girl's school, all-girls schools, having us as parents, have that choice to put our children in all-girls schools is important. So if we're talking about choice, that would be great to have an all-girls school. Grizzlies Prep, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Antranis Michelle Napper, president of MSCA, and I am, my subject is "Thank You." I would like to first of all thank the Superintendent Fagan and the whole administrative team for first allowing us to go back into a collaborative conferencing. And for the 2024-2025 school year, we will have a magnificent compensation plan. So we really thank you for that. We know Tito Langston worked very hard, and Dr. Whitelaw. We really appreciate it. Dr. Fagan, we would like to, first of all, we thank you for coming to our city with a vision. You have come to our city. You have held community meetings. You have been visiting our schools. You even came to our union to visit the teachers, and we appreciate that. We thank you. We can't wait to continue to work with you. So everyone here today, our parents, our teachers, administrators, let's all work together and do be the best that we can be. Thank you.
Good evening. While we on the thank you tour. Again, my name is Charlotte Fields. And Mr. Cheryl Bailey, we're representing one-twenty-six Flicker Street, MSEA. Again, we also give me thanks to Dr. Fagan, Dr. Whitelaw, and Mr. Tito Langston. On the behalf of MSEA, we are appreciative of Dr. Fagan and the compensation team for continuous efforts to level and bring equity to our salary schedule for all employees, including veteran teachers. I know and understand that it's still under works. In advance, again, we are thanking you for your committed and commitment to the work, and we know that you've spoken, and you've shown us that you will show up. Thank you.
Robert Atkins II, Rosalyn Curry, Tracy Walls, and Michael Wallace.
Good evening to the parents, board members, Superintendent. My name is Rosalyn Curry. My address is fifteen thirty-nine Livewell Circle, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one one four. I would just come to say I believe in transparency and the government, and the governance is crucial to our children's education. Tonight, I want to highlight two important points. Our superintendent is fully committed to open, honest, and accountable governance in our school district, and we thank you. We can trust her decision, her dedication to transparency. To ensure transparency, specific strategies will be implemented. These strategies focus- These strategies focus on providing clear information, open communication, and accountability in decision-making. We thank you. Our superintendent's commitment brings us closer to a stronger relationship between the district and our community. We have, we can expect a more transparent and accountable approach to our children's benefit. I am a single mother of a rising junior and rising kindergartner, so I look forward to everything you have in store for the communities and the schools. Thank you.
My name is Ross Klotzbach. I'm at forty-one, forty-six Grandview, speaking on behalf of Grizzlies Prep. With our incoming, I've been our chairman for a little over ten years now.
Excuse me, one second. Did you sign up to speak?
I did, but we were all together, and we didn't know who should start first. I think I'm probably next on that list.
Oh, you, thank you. We found you.
Sorry about that. The main thing we all wanted to say is how grateful we are that we've gotten to work with the school district for the last ten-plus years. We hope we've done a good job at Grizz Prep for our young men so far. We've got a full school building. We've got a Level Five school, got great leadership with Tim Ware and our whole team now. We've got teachers who have seven years-plus classroom experience, and we think now is the right time for a girls' school. It's been too long, and we've had to say no to great parents like you've talked today, who, you know, have daughters who want to go to Grizz Prep too. I'm going to turn it over to Mike Wallace, who started as a parent at Grizz Prep, joined our board, and now is a coach chair.
Thank you. I'm Michael Wallace, address one-nine-one Bill Street, AKA FedEx Forum. I work for the Memphis Grizzlies. Welcome, Dr. Fagins, to Memphis, and thank you for your time and your patience to all the members of the board. Eight years ago, Memphis legend Elliott Perry, Mike Conley, tapped me on my shoulder when I first got to Memphis and worked for the Grizzlies and told me I needed to follow them over to Grizzlies Prep, a very special place where African-American men needed to mentor African-American young men. I took that opportunity and ran with it. Five years ago, my son Kevin, I enrolled him, I took the opportunity to enroll him at Grizzlies Prep. And for the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade years, I saw my young son develop into a wise young man that I can be proud of. He helps in this community, he mentors other kids, and he left that school as a Grizz Scholar. Now, one thing I haven't been able to take an opportunity yet, Kevin has a twelve-year-old sister who saw all the great things that he did at Grizzlies Prep and said, "Dad, can I go to Grizzlies Prep too?" Well, as much as she looks at me as Superman, I couldn't make that decision for her because girls didn't exist at Grizzlies Prep. We all have an opportunity here to change that. And you heard all the great things that Grizzlies Prep is doing? Let's take the opportunity now to open our doors to the young, wonderful young women who have a chance to go to Grizzlies Prep and join our brothers as well. Thank you.
My name is Tracy Walls, and I'm at eighty-eight-sixty Pristancia Cove, and I currently am a board member of Grizzlies Prep. I've been on the board for almost eight years, and I have really enjoyed the time served as a board member and really looking forward to the opportunity to serve as co-chair. During the day, I spend most of my day professionally promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion within our corporate environment and also within the community. It is that passion that I have for this effort that has enabled me the opportunity to personally spend a lot of time serving the community as a board member of Grizzlies Prep. We really understand the value that having a dedicated focus to these young men of color can bring to the community and to their future. I also understand the importance of investing that same amount of time and energy in helping support our young women and our young ladies, who are also able to, one day, grow up to be strong community leaders and businesswomen in the community. And I would like to have a part in helping make that happen. So, Grizz Prep Girl School would be a wonderful way to get that started, and thank you for your time listening today.
Mr. Robert Atkins, are you present? Okay, our last two speakers, Notoria Carpenter and Danette Stokes.
Notoria Carpenter, sixteen thirty-seven Britton. I am a lifelong Memphis resident and a advocate for excellent education for every child, and most importantly, I am a parent. I want to thank Dr. Fagin's for everything you are doing to promote excellence, forged relationship with parents, educators, and community, and making it clear, to be successful, it takes all of us working together. From your barbershop talks to your Memphis Left Faiside chat and VIP tours the last couple of weeks, I appreciate your efforts to carve out a place in the communities that have been crushed by the system for decades. I have heard from so many parents leaving the chat, they feel excited, optimistic, and a sense of being heard, and a sense of hope with your leadership. So, again, thank you. I wish you the best as you continue to move the district forward. You have our support as parents, grandparents, and community a hundred percent. Thank you.
Danette Stokes. Six-two, sixty-three Poplar Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, three-eight-one-one-nine. I am a twenty-four-year veteran educator and currently serving as the President of the United Education Association, the affiliate of TEA and NEA. I am reminded of the scripture, Isaiah sixteen twenty-two, when it says, "When the time is right, God will make it happen." On last Friday, we made it happen together during collaborative conferencing. Educators, we are, we are really excited to have you here, Dr. Fagin's, as our new superintendent. We appreciate the work, the efforts, all the efforts that you have put into everything that you are doing within our district. We were able to achieve our goal in such a short time. I want to express my gratitude for your leadership and your dedication to making MSCS a competitive and attractive place for educators. Last year, UEA led a campaign for a fifty-k equity pay. This year, I am thrilled to say that we have reached that goal, and this achievement is a testament of your commitment and supporting and valuing educators in our district. We just received a text from NEA saying that Tennessee is ranked forty-four for salary schedules. Now, I believe, when you present whatever you're going to present, hopefully our salary schedule in a few minutes, that we have moved the needle in our district so that we can be that exemplar district that you have spoken so many times about being, because we are number twenty-three in the nation, we should be the exemplar for this nation. Thank you for thinking about our veteran educators, going back to the table, coming back to us, and saying, "Hey, we value you as well." Thank you so much for your time, and thank you, Tito. Because we couldn't have done it without him. I mean, it was some late hours working, but we got it done together. Thank you.
Let's give another round of applause for Tito Langston and Dr. Whitelaw. Let's keep that spirit going tonight, all right. The question is now on, the approval of the minutes for the following meetings, six-point-one, approval of the minutes of the March twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four business meeting, and six-point-two, approval of the minutes of the April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four work session. Are there any corrections? There being no corrections? Do we have a motion to approve these minutes? And a second? Thank you. Motion by Vice Chair Coleman and Commissioner Garcia. Thank you. Roll call vote.
Commissioner McKissick?
Aye.
Commissioner Hugo Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Woods?
Aye.
Commissioner Love?
Aye.
Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Calvo?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Chair Green?
Aye.
You have nine of them affirmative.
Thank you. That motion passes. We are now on to Committee Reports, eight-point-one, Board Chair Report. This evening, you were exposed to the wonderful Overton High School Brass Group. These students are part of a small ensemble that meets after school and create a unique musical experience. Last weekend, they performed and won first place ever at the Prism Ensemble Chamber Music Competition, making them the first in Memphis to receive such an award. The band program at Overton High School is under the direction of Brandon Doggett and Juan Valdez. Thank you to Board Member Joyce Coleman, Superintendent Dr. Fagan, and Linda Scolar, Sonia Porter, Dr. Williams, and all of the Central Office for their tremendous amount of support. Eight-point-two, no report. Eight-point-three?
No report.
The Charter Schools Committee Report, we are, sorry, we are working toward forming and announcing soon the members of the Charter Partnership Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight-point-five, Community Outreach?
No report.
Eight-point-six, no report. Eight-point-seven, Policy Governance and Legislative? Legislation?
We went over the new legislation in committee meeting.
Thank you. Eight-point-eight, Procurement Committee Report?
All the items are on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Eight-point-nine, General Counsel Report?
No report.
And eight-point-ten, Superintendent's Report?
Well, great evening, everyone. It's day thirty for me, so it was good to see a full house. Glad to see everyone is still as in tune as we were across the district nine different times at our VIP tours, so that you remain connected to the business of the organization as well. So, I'll start this evening just by being really clear on a stance. You know, on April twenty-sixth, I believe it was, the governor signed into law, you know, to allow arming of teachers, and there's some caveats in there, but I just want to be really clear about a statement that I've already made, but I'll make it here as well. Since arriving in Memphis, I've met with hundreds of educators who have asked for more books, to improve technology, and they've asked for better pay. No one is asked to bring a weapon to school to improve the learning environment. Safety for us is a comprehensive approach that includes collaborative partnerships, heightened security measures, and addressing the significant facility needs that impact the psychological and physical well-being of our youngest leaders and the adults who serve them. I own the urgency and commit to the work that must be done. To lighter news, today we did celebrate seven-hundred-and-twenty of our best and brightest young leaders who scored a twenty-five or higher on the ACT. Those are sophomores, those are juniors and seniors, and of that seven-twenty, there are two-hundred who scored a thirty or higher, and then there were twelve who scored a perfect score of thirty-six. And so, that is to be commended. Or any of our young leaders in the room, they probably celebrated themselves and went home, but congratulations to them, to the teachers who contributed to the work, and to our parents, families, those who put in the effort and the long mornings and evenings that it takes to get the tutoring and everything else that is required, and the general high-fives. We appreciate you as well, and we look forward to doubling that and continuing to support our students in these efforts as well. Idolwild chess champs, are those students here in the audience? Yes, there are, my friends. Hello there. Idolwild chess team reached new heights at the Elementary Nationals amongst thirty-three-thousand students. The Eagles represented Idolwild with pride and excellence. In the K-three Under Seven Hundred category, we have James, Lucas, Calvin, Julian, and Soda, who clinched the first-place title nationwide. Come on up here, my friends. Come on up here, my friends. Come on, come on, come on. Yeah, come on up. I'm looking for James, Lucas, Calvin, Julian, and Soda. They were first-place title nationwide, and in the K-five Under Nine Hundred Division, we have Keshav, Yassim, Ralston, Cooper, Kylis, and Kay, who secured fourth place with Keshav and Yassim ranking eighth and nineteenth respectively. Let's go. In the K-three Unrated Team section, we have Oscar and Eli, who secured fourth place, earning individual awards for their remarkable performances. Come on, I hope you're bringing those big trophies, too. And then we have our Littlest Learner, Kindergartner Jen, though without the team, won three games, making a memorable debut as his first-ever rated tournament. So proud of our exceptional young talent. A round of applause, standing ovation, please. Heartfelt gratitude goes to Coaches Mark and Trevor for their dedication in shaping this program, and to our supportive Idolwild community, thank you for your unravering encouragement. I hope everyone's here to join us for a photo.
I'm finally calling for some heat.
I need the Overton Brass students to come on down and be waiting for the next photo.